Ryan, would you want to...
Guys, open in prayer, please.
Bow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, Lord Jesus, boy, what a blessing, what an honor that you've bestowed upon each and every one of us. Lord, given us the opportunity to represent our friends, our family, our community. And my prayer is now, Lord Jesus, that you would be with us in all matters that are going to come up tonight. Lord, our hopes and prayers are for wisdom and for honor for ourselves and our community. I'd ask that you would bless each and every one of us with the insight, the knowledge that we will need to thoughtfully and carefully make each and every decision. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
All right. I hope you take a quick look at your minutes. They entertain motion to accept minutes as printed. I'll make a motion.
No second?
They move in second and approve the minutes as printed. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Put the same sign. Motion carries. I hate to do this to you folks, but we're going to clear the room for 10 minutes, 15.
Whoever remissed the motion tells them. Make a motion to go into executive session for 10 minutes.
I think we... Terry, you and Dean, would you guys stay? Appreciate you willing us to withstand the elements out there. If it was normal weather, you know, you wouldn't have a coat on, Kelly. All right, we're back in open session.
I would like to make a motion to accept Chance Martin as our city attorney and keep him on retainer.
Motion has a second.
Second time.
They moved in second to retain Chance as our city council. Any discussion? If not, all in favor say aye. Aye? Put the same sign. Motion carries. Welcome.
Thank you for helping out.
Well, David, you're on the list here. You're one of the guys off the list. The other one's not here.
These other people can go ahead.
You can come over there.
Jump up here.
Thank you for seeing me in the seat. A week ago Monday, I had a G402 class. It's ICS Incident Command Structure for elected officials, and not just county officials, but city council members also. Mayor Boer and council member Meishler and Jennifer were kind enough to come to the training, and I hope you came away with something from it. Again, Ryan, you're familiar with Incident Command Structure system information. Jennifer and I talked after the meeting, and we had had a discussion about Incident Command Structure and credentialing for city council members and first responders. Sorry. Reference that. The top sheet or top stapled together sheets is the resource management tracking paperwork that I utilize for this to county. With that, has information pertaining to your data bird, your driver's license, doesn't have your social security numbers, that's a violation. And the state with their credentialing system uses your driver's license number as your identification number. With that, any other special requirements or certification that you've acquired, if you have a CDL, that qualifies. If you have an airline pilot or a pilot's license, that qualifies. Hazmat endorsements, that qualifies as special accommodations. Jackie, you're a nurse, that qualifies. Again, I think you have one of these from the hospital also, correct? But again, reference this. If an incident were to happen tonight, for example, with the forecast bad weather that they're expecting, and again, 20 counties south of us are on a tornado watch till 1:00 tonight. Watch is the lowest level of preparedness. Warning is the elevated next step up. Warning is you're more likely to have those favorable conditions. But again, 20 counties are in a watch south of us. Hypothetically, let's say a tornado came through tonight and took out Sylvan Grove. If you people had gone, gotten done with your meeting, or if this was a special meeting and you were down in Salina or Hayes or somewhere else, and after this tornado happened, and you were trying to get back into Sylvan Grove, you would probably be encountered by a trooper. It wouldn't be local law enforcement that would be guarding the road. And the trooper, they're trained that if you don't have a state credential, and I say a state credential, it's resource tracking is, and this is my emergency credential when I'm passing around, but unless you have one of those that identifies you as essential staff for the city of Sylvan Grove, that you're a city council member, you're not getting into Sylvan Grove. That trooper will laugh at you and tell you to pack his hand and go on down the road. And in that sight, such nice words either. You can beg, you can borrow, you can cry, you can whatever. My house was torn up, I need to get my dogs, whatever. They don't care. They will not let you into that scene. And Jennifer, you've been to some clerks training recently that down in...
Gravesburg.
Thank you. And you had conveyed that, the city clerk there...
Gave a presentation on the exact, you know, what happened at that point in time. And, you know, people didn't have even a driver's license or anything to identify them, and they were not allowed in. And, you know, some, one of the people that was their city, who needed to check the water system, check everything, shut things down, was not able to get in initially, is my understanding, because they didn't have credentials.
And again, it's not...
On them, I should say it that way, too.
It's not mandated by the state, but again, with the credentialing system, it just allows you that accessibility to get in if an incident were to happen in your community. Again, I'm not wishing that on anybody, but again, it's always a possibility. The second sheet that I attached, and I know, on to Jennifer and Steve were at the 402 class the other day, there's a form that talks about getting your ICS training. And again, the last form attached to this is credentialing, and this was just updated by FEMA effective 2018, the end of 2018 is now in effect. Any elected official, they would like you to have this 402 class. Again, if you can't make a 402 class, again, you're always just accessible to a 100 and 700 class. The 100 and 700 are online as the second sheet behind the attachment talks about. It tells you how to go onto the FEMA training site, get your state identification training number, or your student identification number, excuse me, and then how to complete the tests and what to do after that. Again, it's not mandated, but I don't mind making city council cards for all you members here that are city council members. I just need to know when your term expires with your credential, and then if you run unopposed or renew your spot, then just keep me in the loop on when that timeframe is. I know, Steve, you have a fire credential and...
I guess our question would be, are those still valid, or have they already come up sweet?
The city council ones?
Last fire ones.
They're still, they're still good. And I think when I did those pictures last time, when I did the cards, there's an expiration date that automatically pops up on the computer, and it notifies you when these city council or fire or whatever agency that is are going to expire.
I can remember taking pictures here one time, but that's been several years ago.
Years ago.
City Council.
Right, right. And I know like Josh's, his just came up, but he's no longer on council, so it's a moot point. But I'm not supposed to dump those names that are not associated with those positions out of the system. So I just make them inactive and it stays in the system. But again, if anybody would have any questions, I'd be more than willing to answer them pertaining to Incident Command Structure or training or classes or... At that training, Steve had communicated with me about the emergency operations plan for Lincoln County. It's 256-page document. There is a version of it on the county website now. It's been up for about a week and a half, week...
I got you another question.
And again, you can go to the emergency management page on the county website, and it has the Lincoln County Emergency Operations Plan under, or to the right side when you're looking at your computer screen, it has it on the right-hand side, and it's highlighted and underlined in blue. And then there's a shorter version of the 267 page that's accessible for anybody. Anybody can print it. It's in PDF form, so nobody can change it, compromise the county's plan. But again, it's something that US and community stakeholders might be interested in looking at. It's a good read. Again, just trying to be proactive with your communities and being involved in getting everybody into location if they need to be.
But you have any questions? David? I guess if anything, my request, you know, you made some, or made a statement there concerning the responsibility of elected personnel in the event of an emergency, if you want to kind of reiterate that. Or not?
Ultimately, US, US city council members, or again, too, the size of Sylvan Grove, the community, doesn't have a whole lot of resources. So at the point where hypothetically a tornado comes through, or we could pick on a flood, when an incident happens for within the county or within the city that affects the city directly, you're going to be adjourned to your resources pretty quickly. At that point, the county would be contacted. I as emergency manager, emergency manager would be involved in at the local level here, but then again, too, once those resources are gone, then the county can step up and do resource allocation to this incident. Again, the county doesn't have a whole lot of resources either, as everybody knows. And at that point, then, I can send out information pertaining to my neighboring communities and counties, and we'll probably go through resources pretty quickly, as everybody out west of Wanta Make a Road knows, sparsely populated and lack of resources. With that, again, it wouldn't take very long to have state resources readily disposable at the drop of a hat. Again, this is just part of the emergency operations plan and memorandum of understandings that the county has in place. Again, any questions? So again, if you guys would take the time, and again, I know everybody's busy, at some point, if you would fill these out and get them back to Jennifer?
That's what you want me doing, that's probably the easiest for most of them.
Okay. And just drop them off here, and then when she gets them in, if you'd be kind enough to take a picture? Okay, thank you. And it doesn't have to be a whole body shot, glam shot, or any of those, like from the neck out, and no hats on and no sunglasses. Other than that, that's pretty much my schmear tonight.
Well, there's no question. Thank you very much.
Appreciate your time.
Thanks, David.
Thank you, everybody.
If we didn't attend the 402 class...
Again, you can still do the...
Those two?
187, yes, sir. Again, those are listed on that, on that sheet right there. Tells you how to get there and what to do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you waiting on, you?
Go ahead.
Can you print something off?
Yeah, that's fine. Go ahead, Kelly.
Tim, you want to come on up?
Sure. Remember to sit, stand. This won't take very long, but I've got sort of a two-pronged request. Last winter, we had a water leak over in our office next door, which, just to fill it in, some of you maybe don't quite understand, and I know that the city has, one of their main sources of income is selling water, which is certainly a good thing. This water leak over here, unfortunately, over in the mini park next door to our, between south of Legion Hall, that building, I don't know how many of you remembers, no, Steve probably can't, anyway, there's a guy that could, Mr. Siegel. That store was demolished. It had a full basement under it, and, which was fine, when they did that, and I think the city did a lot of the demolition work, they just pushed it in and kind of threw a little dirt over it. Well, that was fine at the time, but as this has deteriorated slash rotted the wood, whatnot, what's happened down there, it's created a, virtually a reservoir. And so, one of the water leak in our office happened, when we don't know, but it was several weeks prior to anybody catching it at least. But nobody could see it because the water was all running down into the old basement. And it never did come to the surface until finally, after everything thought out through all that cold weather, then a little bit, a little bit started trickling up by the hydrant. So that led to huge usage to the city, of course. So one question I have is if the city has some sort of rebate, whatever you want to call it, to alleviate some of that problem. But my biggest concern, and what I want to throw out to the city fathers, and you don't say city mothers, do you?
Probably not.
Matrons.
No, not matrons, no. Is if something like that happens again to anybody, there really isn't any check and balance system to catch that until next spring. And so my, the second part of the question is, is maybe some of you all who are a lot smarter than I am could come up with something, or I don't know who talked to it even, but I think, I really feel like there should be some sort of check and balance, other than whenever the water meters get read six months after they were read last through the winter, because somebody could have, or more than one person could have just, you know, devastating usage, and if it happened to be like this, we didn't even know it. And anyhow...
I guess, I guess one thing I need to say, though, Tim, is granted, there are times, I believe, that we average waters, like the weather's terribly inclement.
I understand averaging, but it doesn't...
Well, I was going to say, but I want to, I just want to be clear, though, only one time since I worked here have we ever estimated a bill, every other time they're read every month.
Yeah.
It's very rare that we estimate.
You read, you read the water meters even?
All winter.
All winter long?
Yes.
Okay, I wasn't aware of that. So, okay, I guess that part of the question...
I just needed to...
No, I didn't realize that, because that hasn't always been that way, has it?
Since, I know it has been since I've worked here, but that's only been three years.
Prior to you, it wasn't, because I know water bills that were just the same every month for month, 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 month through the winter. I mean, that's how they were. So if they are now being read monthly, then that would alleviate that problem. So that goes back to the other one. You know, if there's anything you all see fit that you could potentially help out with, great.
Well, obviously, we can't, I mean, we look, all things being perfect, so to speak, we look at everybody's meter once a month. I mean, you know, it's impossible for us to go look at people's meters more than once a month, if that makes sense.
No, I wouldn't expect you to.
I guess, as I understand, if part of the, part of the problem with your situation was it happened between readings, had we had a meter reading in the middle of it, your usage would have been half.
Well, obviously, that's true, yeah.
It's just fate, but...
No, I get that.
Or the little monkey that went down there and broke the pipe, you know?
Yeah, we're going to have to either put a different meter on that or take that out or something, because I don't want that to happen. It's a waste of water, plus it costs a lot.
And as far as rebate or anything, our policy, correct me if I'm wrong, on water leaks, the city usually will stand half, and the other party stands half, if that's behind their meter, which this was, correct?
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, it was behind. I guess that's the, is that, where's, is that the only meter?
For your building?
Yep. Okay.
Yeah, yeah, that one meters to your building right there.
Okay.
But what I'm saying is, we, through the years, we've had water leaks, big and small.
Sure.
Obviously, this is one of the bigger ones.
Very big.
But, but the policy is that the city will stand half of it.
Okay.
So...
Okay.
All that being said, that's, and as I understand, that's already been...
Yeah, but it was extremely...
Oh, that's already half?
Yes, that's half.
Oh my gosh. I thought what was, what I was seeing was the whole thing.
No, that's...
Okay.
Yeah, it was...
So, so we're going to eat the same amount you are?
Okay, I was not aware that that was, had already happened, or I wouldn't have even been here, probably, but...
Right, and the only other thing like we talked about is, would be the sewer.
We could, if council...
Now, that didn't go down the sewer, for sure.
Well, with council's blessing, knowing that that water did not go through the system, unless somebody has an objection, we could abate the sewer on that amount, or at least, you know, I guess, aside from your normal usage, if that makes sense.
To the original, so like, the way we, because of the way the water leak policy, the adjustment is, you take the minimum off, you divide that by half, and we take half of what the leak would have been off. So, in this circumstance, the total sewer was $471, because the general policy is to take half, it went to $228 off of that, but the rest of that could be taken off of the sewer charge. So then you would be, so that'd be 200 and... The normal sewer charge is $15 for the, because they use less than the minimum, so they, that they have the minimum sewer charge, which would be $15. So you could take that down to that original $15 for the sewer charge, which would be another 200, a little over $200 off.
That'd be helpful, yeah. But yeah, I guess I wasn't, like I said, I wasn't aware that that amount that you showed me. I thought that was the whole thing, but that was only half.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, man. Yeah, it all fell at the wrong time, but...
Does anybody have objections to abating that sewer portion of it?
No.
How, well, maybe this isn't the place to ask, but how can... How hard is it to put another meter in? Not hard. Okay. And what does that cost?
What, you want your meter changed out?
No, I'm, that hydrant that caused all this, the only reason we put that damn thing in was to water that mini park.
Okay.
And now it's just cost thousands of dollars for, you know, and we could have been running across the street again, or across the lot. But, so we're either, we either need to put a meter on that or just eliminate it, because that was the only reason that we put that hydrant next to that building, was when that mini park got put in, it was to water that.
So do...
There's a meter at the mini park.
Yeah, there is a meter.
It already has its own meter?
It's, there's not a hydrant off of it, but one could probably be connected off of it, just right next to the sidewalk. But there is a meter, what probably went, used to go to that old building or whatnot. So it's there, there is one active, you know, it's off, but there is one in that one can down there for it.
So is there one can or two can? Does it all come from over here on the street, or is, where's the one for our office? I'm sounding pretty stupid here.
Yours is off of the, there's a main line up this road, and it's on this side of the street. And then each one has an individual tap that's tapped off.
I guess I need to look.
So what you're saying, there is, there's already a tap there for the mini park?
Yeah.
Okay. But it's not being utilized at this time?
Correct.
Okay, well, we, when we did that, we were told it wasn't, there wasn't one. So that's why we put that damn hydrant in there.
So how much watering happens there on, I mean, we really don't know, because the meter isn't. Any idea?
We have, we've been, when we water, we've been using the hydrant, which is ours.
Your water, yeah, so I understand that.
And technically, I think the agreement was, was the city was supposed to water it, but just to help the city along, we just water it.
Well, I understand that, but what I'm saying is, we have no way of knowing an average of what, how much water gets used in that mini park in a given year, because it's all been on yours.
Oh, we could probably tell that, yeah, I mean, if we had to.
I'd have no problem putting a hydrant on that meter in the city. Anybody have an objection to that?
No. I mean, it's the city mini park, I mean...
Right.
You know, Tim doesn't need to be watering it.
Yeah, it's on your mini park.
No.
Well, to be clear...
Everybody, I was going to say...
To be clear, Clarence Trueon owns half of that, Tim owns half of that, and we have a lease agreement.
Right. Is it a perpetual lease or a minor lease?
It's $10 a year, for, yeah, pretty much perpetually.
The last, the last agreement that we had was that it would, it would remain, it automatically renews unless, 30 days prior to the signing of the agreement on that date, or, you know, from the, it's August that it renews in. So if he doesn't say that he wants to change that lease agreement, it automatically renews, is the way it was written.
Okay.
And then the city was going, for that, 10 bucks, then the city...
I guess what I'm saying is, I appreciate you guys' benevolence in the past, providing...
Well, thank you.
But by the same token, if there's a decent amount of watering happening over there to keep things going, then it'll be incumbent upon us to be doing that.
Okay.
And if there's a tap already there, why?
Yeah.
There's a meter can there, it'd just be a matter of, I guess, trenching and then boring underneath that sidewalk to get to the can, without looking into it, anything can be possible.
Well, yeah, but if you've already got one over here next to the sidewalk, well, can't you just hook it up there? That's the city's meter, right? Or whose meter is that?
The meters there just doesn't have any, my understanding is there's no hydrant, there's no tap into that meter.
Well, it has had a hose running out of it before.
Okay, that's what I'm...
Out of the, out of the meter?
It needs to be researched.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think we have to look into it.
That's a no-no.
Well, you're going to ask your last city employee how he hooked it up.
Okay.
But I can tell, promise you...
Well, in all honesty, though, if that was the case, then the city was providing that water, because it wasn't getting metered.
Right, and then we decided that, because it was, it just looked bad, and plus he didn't like doing it, so hence the hydrant.
So, so basically, that illustrates the fact that, in essence, the city had been providing some water at some point.
One time, yeah. And then it got to be such a pain in the ass, that we did, excuse me, it got to be such a pain...
Right.
That we just did the hydrant deal, so.
Well, if you'd give us some time to look it over and decide...
Sure, that's fine.
I think that certainly could be a possibility, so.
All right, I appreciate it. Thanks for your time, everybody.
All right, thank you, Tim.
Thank you.
Steve?
Yes.
May I interject one thing here?
Yeah.
Listening to what Tim has had happen there, I think is actually somewhat happened before. I speak of when the new fire station was built down here where the hotel was at.
Right.
Those foundation blocks were just pushed in.
Nope.
There was rock.
I have to correct you, though, Red, that was all exhumed. When we built that fire station, we went down, we spent weekends... When we built that fire station, we went down, we spent weekends digging that out. Yeah, the county?
I agree with you.
So that cavity is not there?
I, yes, I agree with you.
Okay.
I'm just saying, that's what happened, though, that it got pushed in and leveled off.
Yeah.
There's a move underway at the present time to demolish some of the vacant buildings that are residents here in the city, and I think this could be a lesson learned, that when they are demolished, when they are just, you know, consumed, do it and do it right.
Right.
Prevent a problem like this.
Obviously, though, I would go as far as to say, anything that's gonna get demolished in our housing rehabilitation program, that's gonna be done by the book.
Yeah, that's, that's out of our hands.
Yeah, it's by the state's mandate.
Yeah.
I appreciate that.
That's it.
Good. All right, Kelly. Want to come up and talk this?
And I have to apologize because I grabbed this when I walked out of the office, but I did not grab copies of master plan, so I don't know.
I did send a copy to everyone per email, so I don't know if anybody had a chance to look at it. But I do have one, I was debating whether to copy more, so in case you bring some, that wasn't gonna cost, but if anybody.
Intended to. Yeah, I know, I felt like.
Yeah, we were discussing that.
Well, uh, I had instructed Jennifer, you give the presentation, but since you're here, by all means, if you would share with the rest of the council exactly what it is.
Yeah, I'll, I'll give a little background, but I honestly feel like Jennifer, and you've been involved too, where in terms of the specifics of, of next steps for some of these projects, I've got a great handle on it, so. So I guess just a little bit of background, um, and I can give a lot of background, but I'll, I'll give you the very abridged version. So, a year and a half ago, the Post Rock Community Foundation started, um, strategic doing. The idea was how, it was pushed from the Dane Hansen Foundation, so they've been pushing strategic doing on all the Northwest Kansas counties, and the idea with that is how, how can they encourage all of our area to think bigger, broader, more visionary, I guess you could say, in, in terms of projects that are really going to make a, an impact. And, and I guess, you know, there's a lot of things that we do that make an impact, but a lot of times it's sort of maintaining things as well. But what, what are the, the things that we can do that really kind of moves the needle and, and really moves us forward in terms of amenities and quality of life and, and some of these important projects where, I guess just challenge us to think bigger. Um, and so, a year and a half ago, there was a large kind of countywide meeting, um, talking about what are some of these big ideas that people have in the county. And then through that, we sort of filtered it down and, and several projects that came up, it was all about trails, park improvements, splash pads, I guess I would say outdoor amenity, healthy living kinds of things. And so, there were several of those projects, and all those people that were behind that kind of decided, well, how about we all get together and, and kind of talk? Because all of these things are, are related. And as that committee started moving forward, I think what we realized is that the reason why trail projects haven't moved forward, or splash pads, or some park improvements, and, and I'm not just talking here in Sylvan, but, you know, in Lincoln and all, all over the county, is that while we've got ideas, we lack kind of some basic technical expertise, I guess you could say, you know, we, we wanna build a trail, but, you know, we can't apply for a grant unless we have a plan and we have cost estimates, and so it, it always came down to, we need a plan, we need a plan, and we have cost estimates, and so the committee decided that the project that they were gonna work on was developing a master plan, put all these projects together, hire Schwabeaten out of Beloit to kind of give us that technical look. Actually, you know, they're, they're engineers, so when we talk about trails, you know, actually look at the place and kind of think about, okay, in terms of the costs and the materials and, and how do you construct this thing, you know, they, they're able to look at it from that perspective. So, uh, our committee, we got a grant from the Post Rock Community Foundation and the Dane Hansen Foundation to hire Schwabeaten to sit down with us as a committee, look at these projects that we have, and then put together this wonderful master plan that you should all have copies of, and, um, kind of give us those cost estimates. And now we've got a framework of a plan that, okay, for each of these projects, we can apply for more grants to actually make them happen. So there's eight, nine, ten different projects in there. Uh, for Sylvan Grove specifically, uh, we're talking about, um, a loop around the high school. Um, we're talking about some sidewalk improvements to connect the school with the park and the downtown and kind of over here, and then also old railroad line trail, I guess you could say. And.
And then a trail along, also the undeveloped street, Virginia.
Virginia, yeah.
And so, if you, right now, that's, two sections of that street were never developed into an actual street. So because that's city property, you could use that and put a trail that would go from the park all the way to the railway trail. And so that was an, as a part of that, along that drainage.
Yeah, and then the last thing, and it's not so much specifically looking at, at any one particular project, but splash pads in general, if you're gonna do splash pads, or if people are interested in doing that in the community, here's some of the big factors that you have to consider, that I think it's really easy to see the end product and not all the.
The work.
The work and the decisions and the cost that goes into making a splash pad. So anyway, long story short, we have this master plan, Lincoln's got several projects in there, Sylvan has several, several projects in there, and then Barnard also has a, a trail project. The next step with all of these projects, though, really is, while we've got great information to put into grant applications to move any one of these pieces forward, the one link that we really do need is that we need all the city councils and the county commission to adopt this master plan. That's kind of one of those things, if you're gonna go to the Department of Transportation for safe routes to school funding or something like that, having an adopted master plan that the community in general, uh, looks at and, and gives it its blessing, and knowing that it was done through a community-wide process where there's a lot of different input that came into it, that's a key step. I mean, that just, that just gets us one step closer, you know, that right bo, checkbox on the grant applications that this has been adopted. So that's one thing. The next thing is in terms of prioritizing which of those projects the city would like to move forward, because, I mean, there are, there are costs with all of these things, and we, we do know that. But, so how do we start to, as a city, as a community, as we look at other grant funds, start to plan? You know, we're not saying that one, any of these projects needs to happen next month or anything, but we certainly would like to, let's get it in, a long-term plan, let's start budgeting for it, let's start figuring out, okay, so what grant applications are we going to apply for? So that we're ready for those deadlines and can move forward, so. Anyway, that's just kind of my very quick background on it. Yeah, last week, we had a presentation of the master plan for a countywide type of thing, and I guess now we're working, as a committee, we're working to approach each of the city councils and, and also approach the county commission as well to, to adopt and then.
Can you comment on where the funds came for the master plan?
Yes, so a grant from the Post Rock Community Foundation and the Dane Hansen Foundation. We got a total of twenty-three thousand dollars from those two sources to hire Schwabeaten for it.
Did the county commission put anything in that?
No. And, and economic development, we've simply been the pass-through of those funds, but we didn't put any into it either, so.
If we would adopt it, are we obligated, I guess, to follow through with all those, or?
No, that, not my understanding anyway. You're, you're adopting it and kind of giving it a blessing, but that doesn't necessarily.
It's just a plan.
You're accepting it as, you know, acknowledging the amount of work and money that went into it, and it's, it's, it's gonna be your fallback, you know, like say, if we decide to pursue a project or something. You know, by the same token, you know.
Things could be changed in it as well.
I mean, it's, it's not set in stone, it's, it's just, it's a guide, so to speak, you know.
And you have extra money.
The big thing for, one of the things that we asked Schwabeaten to do, we talked a lot about funding sources for each one of these projects, and so when they wrote that plan, they did it in such a way that it, you could take that to a KDOT funding source or something like that, and that would be what they would need to then move you forward. And so, it, it's kind of specific to, to some of those funding sources that we thought each of those projects would.
Qualify for.
Yes, and so, and that, part of that is, is for KDOT, especially, that adoption is really a key factor in what they look at for.
I guess I was just, my concern was if we would adopt that, are we obligated to, at some point in time, finish all of those projects that are in that, so.
Well, and I was just, I, I said at the meeting, um, when they presented it countywide, as this, as we were finishing up this project, I found a, a source for making the trail loop around the high school that is almost cost-free and by applying to Kansas Trails Council for a trail in a box, to do it as, at first as a dirt trail. And they, basically, it requires ten to fifteen volunteers and two or three days' work, and they come, show you how to build that trail, you build that around that, around there. At that point, my thought was, you could then take that, see how often that trail is used, see how it's being utilized, and if at some point we wanna take that and then apply for an aggregate trail, we can do that. But, you know, that's a way that we can get one of these projects moving, moving forward, see how it's being used, and from that point, without spending a lot of money, and, and, and then we can say, yes, we wanna, this is something our community is definitely getting used, we can move forward with some of these other parts of the plan.
And by the same token, I mean, we've all heard the question, why won't you guys build a splash pad? That addresses the, the major issues in a splash, splash pad. If the decision is not to, you know, it gives us credibility, it's like, uh, a lot of people think, it'll be great, yeah, it will, but this answers a lot of the technical questions, the dollar questions.
The water question.
But, yeah, definitely, and if you look at it in detail, it's, it's, I'm not gonna say, it's not vague because it, there's very, there's a lot of detail in it, but it's, again, not something that.
Nothing certain.
There, there's enough specifics in it, like, like she said, that someone at a state level can look at it and say, okay, at least I have a rudimentary idea of what you guys want, if that makes sense.
Yep.
Um, and another thing in terms of, um, like connecting the park with the school, you know, you've got a segment there that's, you've got kids walking in the street, so, so to speak, and it's not, he, I'm trying, and I can't think of what the other one's called, but there's a program called Safe Routes to School.
Yeah.
And that requires a phase one, which is you have to submit a plan to KDOT saying, this is what our safe routes to school program is gonna be, and so this is where all the sidewalks and so forth. Um, and you can get funding for phase one, and then there's a phase two, which is grants, which is the actual construction of it. Lincoln is, I think, a number of years ago, they had started their phase one, they never quite finished it, and what's in here is now enough so that we, they can submit it and say, we're done with our phase one, so now we can apply, apply for the phase two. Sylvan's a little different situation, in a way, there's some pros and cons to it, where you haven't done the phase one yet, but because of that.
There's an alternative transportation.
Yes.
KDOT funds available.
Yeah.
And so we could use, we could apply to those alternative transportation, or, yeah, alternative, yeah, I'm sure, I think that's right, alternative transportation grants. And, and so, instead of the safe routes to schools, we could use that, which would also give us the opportunity to use, to do those other trails and part of, you know, not just, yeah, to connect the whole thing, not just to the school.
Yeah, in Lincoln's case, the only, for safe routes to school, the only fund sidewalks and trails that connect to schools. Whereas here, since you haven't gone, that, started going down that path yet, you can connect all sorts of things, so, um, in a way, it gives you more flexibility. But this pretty much does your phase one, so you don't have to spend money to do that, you've got that done, and you kind of skips the phase.
The plan was gonna make a big loop, because it was gonna connect the churches too, and?
Well, that was, um, when I had the intern, um, back in two thousand seventeen, we, and we were starting to talk about things. We, we did talk about how do we connect all of these different things, but.
I didn't know if that was.
Yeah, no, this committee, I think, I mean, we had a lot of projects in the beginning, and when we realized, okay, how do we, with the funding that we've got, we really gotta narrow it down, and what are the top, top priorities? And so, um, the sidewalk, the, the high school loop, um, and then the old railroad there, and then kind of this Virginia street.
What's nice about it, there's, you know, like for our proposals here, there's several variations. It shows just around the school, it shows coming around, it shows, you know, connecting the school. There's, there are at least three, maybe four maps in there.
Yeah, yeah.
Just drawn out, so.
And a budget to each, so you can kind of pick which piece.
Or the breakdown what it got to.
Now, Kelly, as a city council, do you just need us to adopt a healthy living plan?
I.
Since, I mean, since we have the master plan, what do we need to do to help out?
Basically, adopt that plan.
Yeah, probably a motion to adopt it.
It just, it gives the credibility and recognizes it.
I'll make a motion, we adopt the Healthy Living Master Plan presented by Kelly Larsen.
One second.
I have a motion in a second to adopt the Healthy Living Master Plan. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Of the same sign. Motion carries.
Thanks very much.
Yes, sir.
Steve, I have a little quick question or a comment, I'm sure everybody here understands it, but, um, the city can apply to Post Rock once or more than once for, for project grants, and shouldn't be afraid to do that.
Okay.
I mean, you don't have to just narrow it down to one, you can apply for different projects. And if they're too big, they can go to Hanson too, so.
Right.
I just wanna make sure that essentially all of it kind of here, and I, I think you probably already all know that.
I will.
Big deal, actually.
The Post Rock Community Foundation opens twice a year, yeah.
I will relate to you guys, though, what Stuart from Schwabeaten, his favorite catchphrase is, go for the big one because you're, the bang for your buck, you get more because you're over, you're always gonna have your overhead involved. And, you know, the idea of doing it piecemeal, it's like, well, let's do what we can afford, or what we, but, but he cautioned us, he said, like, when you look at these different projects, he said, I, I really want you to seriously think about doing them as a whole, because you're gonna go through all the process of applying to the state. And stu, and I, I understand he was saying, it's not my first, uh, line of thinking, but that, every time we met with him, I mean, he always said that, so.
Well, I understand what you're saying, but I didn't mean any specific project, it's just in general, you know, I mean, the money's not there, even from Hanson, it might be for some three hundred thousand dollar water park, you know, but.
So my question.
It was just a general, uh, statement to make sure that the city doesn't think, um, maybe we gotta do something more to the library, or what? I don't know why, but I guess I'm saying, just don't be afraid to ask.
Well, and I don't know, I, I, I mean, when you look at those, like, if you applied for alternative transportation grant, we're talking a four hundred thousand dollar project, from KDOT, the expectation from the city is usually it's an eighty-twenty, and I don't know if that twenty percent could come in part from another source or not, I don't know.
I, I, I think that's the way you would look at it, you can, how do you apply for the big grant, and then whatever that local match is, you apply.
That's gonna kick in our, our share.
Everybody, right.
I mean, which would, you could, you know.
Yeah.
And that's, yeah, yeah, that's how I would go about it as well.
It's also on the county website somewhere.
Um, it's on, uh, the Live Lincoln County website.
Okay.
The plan, so you can download it there, um, the meeting the other night.
Copy, I, I mean, I can print off a copy for anybody who wants, print a copy.
But you send it to us.
Yeah, email.
Thank you very much.
Very much.
Thank you, Kelly.
Appreciate you, appreciate you, Kelly.
All right, I have nothing to report, I'll see you next month.
That'd be fun, wouldn't it?
I know better. I know. Okay, so the last 30 days, all the rest of the letters, the certified letters, for every, and I mean every person in the city that had any kind of an operable vehicle. No matter where it was, if it was any kind, if it was noncompliance in any state or any way, those letters went out. Uh, there was probably another 20 of them or so, I suppose, so we got business owners, residents, everybody, everybody, everybody. We have not received all the signature confirmations back on all of those as of yet. There was one refused, which is fine, he just, that person just kind of gives up their right to a hearing, more or less, because the process still continues. There's still process in the ordinance that I follow that, you know, it might go as far as placarding on the, whatever it takes. So, they might have bought themselves a little bit of time, but that's really about it. There are some other individuals, though, that I have not talked with, most everybody's been pretty receptive that I have talked with. People have called me, asked what they need to do, asked if things are good enough. I do appreciate the council's action over the last couple of months, as far as making it a little, I'm not going to say easier, but a little clearer for me as far as black and white and less gray. And I mean that as far as individuals are in, you know, areas that we kind of overlooked in the past, or kind of, you know, allowed people over here who have a mechanic shop to kind of tuck things away in the trees, and that wasn't fair to other individuals who were in the same positions. So, I do appreciate the council, like I said, where we kind of leveled that playing field. That said, there's an abundance of other things that need to have letters sent out, so junk here and junk there, and some, you know, unsightly vegetation, grass and weeds, whatever else we're going to run across, so. I would ask council if they have anything specifically, any concerns, comments, been brought to them, or anything you want to talk about on a case by case basis, or like that.
Well, obviously, we saw kind of a foray of activity before the last city council meeting, which is encouraging.
Right, and I would also, actually, as you said that, I would like to say, or ask, I guess, ask your opinion earlier, what you guys want to do with the standing agreement between Mr. Wareman and all the auditing properties, and he did text me again earlier, and Stephen's sitting right there.
I have two of those that are over to Lucas to work on this week.
So there's two more of theirs that were, and those aren't those things, those are the older ones too, they weren't the ones that, was that, is that, Milton told me that the ones that you took out, and I don't know which ones they are yet, because he just texted me like five minutes before the meeting, but he said they weren't ones that were recently, they were older ones, they weren't ones that were recently. So some of the other ones we've been talking about, not, not the revolving door stuff up front, that's the way I understood it, but I don't, can't verify that, except for, you know, Stephen's right there, so I believe him. I guess what I'm getting at is, if that agreement, and like with the property next door over here, I know if you remember on cleanup day in the past, they hauled, they said a lot of stuff about, we hauled a lot of stuff off. They helped out, donated some to their forklift or whatnot, well, they had their project vehicles, they kind of got tucked away along the edge in the trees there. And those things haven't moved. And, you know, what was cleanup day two years ago, I suppose now, already two years, right?
Two years ago, April.
And so again, I guess my question is specifically, are we going to allow that type of, you know, what is council's thoughts on that? They have probably, I mean, there's probably 20, 20, that are hidden pieces, parts, whatever, that I would consider.
They've been there longer since once.
Right, that are not the ones, I'm not talking about customers' vehicles, I'm not talking, you know, even things that take longer than 30 days, I'm not talking about that at all. Not talking about the ones that are working on, we're talking about the stuff.
Stuff that's been sitting there for years.
Sitting there, tucked away, hidden in trees, trees growing up around it, that stuff. If they start in a timely manner of moving stuff, removing stuff, and again, he, that individual has not picked up his certified letter yet, which I'm kind of surprised by, to be honest with you. But, and I have not spoken with him since the letter got mailed out.
Well, obviously, we want to push, I mean, we.
Well, and I can follow ordinance strictly, directly, and wait till they.
We appreciate the cooperation and stuff, by the same token, you know, and one thing Dean and I talked about was, you know, as you look at some of these properties, you have what I call the peripheral, you got stuff sitting, start working on those ends so that that problem shrinks, if that makes sense. Instead of it being, you know, we take the car out of the middle here, and nobody ever knows what happened, but start to shrink those problems. So.
And that would be very, especially over here.
That would apply back here.
They could just, yeah, start compressing, I mean, as in removing, but compressing, I don't mean compressing the vehicles, I mean.
Switch them up against the wall.
I don't want that, no, but anyway. And that's fine, I can just, you know, just treat it the way it is until something else comes about, I mean.
I, I guess, are you, you're asking for clarification, are we willing to extend the same grace?
Yes, I looked for, yeah, on record at the meeting, if that is something that can be talked about when I have that conversation here this week.
Try to verify.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Very good, that's fine, yep, that's fine.
You know, and we've been down that road.
Because I already, there's a lot of this already.
Yeah.
And that's, and that's fine.
Which, which was the very reason for everybody getting the letter, because we were tired of hearing about, well, you're playing favorites, you know, so.
Yes, that's correct.
And like I say, everything that happened, I'm thrilled with, we saw some progress, and, you know, we just, we just want to keep, keep pushing, so. Issues other than vehicles?
There's, I mean.
Cluttered properties?
There's, but to be honest, there's nothing that, there's nothing that council needs to take, has to take any action on. I mean, if there is, there'll be something, I'll, Chance and I'll visit a little bit, and, you know, see some pieces of resolutions.
I know that some grass and weed letters have gone out to properties that have been vacant for years, and we have been in, I mean, every year we send out letters, and every year we mow those properties. So, there's 10?
Were there that many? I wasn't thinking there was that many, but you would know, so. Yeah. On the corner side?
Yeah.
Thank you. So anyway, but so those, those I know, but those are typical, and so those have been sent out, the vegetation I know is high.
Well, the thing about it is, when you have.
To go through process.
You know, when you have somebody respond and they clean something up, it just eliminates the mess sitting next to them, even more so, you know. And that's fine, because like I say, you know, Dean and I talked about a couple of properties that are just, for years, they've just been a clutter, you know. They're not residences, I guess.
They don't reside here, they just don't.
Nobody residing there, but they're used for storage, so. While you're here, I want to talk a little bit about unattended trailers.
Okay.
I drove around, I counted no less than at least six. And we've talked about this in the past, trailers that aren't hooked to a vehicle, they're unattended, for one thing. We're quickly approaching the point where Terry's going to get started spraying the streets, we want to start earlier than we did last year and get ahead of it. And we had a good, good response on that last year, and we've already talked about that, but if there's a trailer been sitting there forever, granted, seen a couple move and stuff, but I'd like to see us work on our ordinance concerning nuisance vehicles and do something, now whether that's a traffic.
It's under the standard traffic ordinance, the under the trailers.
And I think it's already addressed in there, but it's, it's a little vague, isn't it, I mean.
I don't know if Chance can verify that, but it's under the standard traffic ordinance that we adopt every year.
Uniform traffic.
Well, there's uniform.
There's uniform public offense kind of.
And then there's standard traffic ordinance, so it'd be under the standard traffic ordinance, you're not to leave unattended trailers on city streets, from my understanding of reading that.
Yeah, if we have a copy, we can pull it up right now, but I didn't bring mine with me.
I'm sure that's on section A. I'm just making sure, would that be in the bottom part of A?
Oh, in section 93A?
Yes. Unless I'm not reading that correctly, but.
No, that's right, yeah, that covers it. So, yeah, I mean, that's, clearly covers unattended trailers.
So in essence, any trailer sitting unhitched or anything would be immediately a violation?
That's right, you can't park it, you can't store it on the street, yeah, can't do it.
And that's a state code.
This is a, it's a, it's a uniform code that the city adopts, most, almost every city and state adopts this code.
And I mean, I, I, I'm not familiar with that particular one, I've read that one, I've read through some other pretty fun ones with, with the city of Lucas over there, and what you have to do, you know, barbed wire and things like that in town, so. What, what, I mean, and I, and I'll do that at my own time, I'll review, I'll go through that to see what, on my end, that I can do as far as the enforcement part, before it has to be turned over to, whether it's the law enforcement, or, or what it is. Or I can just read it now, too.
Is that traffic?
That would be traffic, so, what I don't know, and I, I'm not, I pulled in the back of it, I don't know that it gives, I'm trying to think of what the citation would be.
Doesn't provide a penalty.
Right.
If there's not a penalty listed in the particular code, it goes back to the, the general penalty section in there, which I'm not sure off the top of my head what that is, but.
Right.
It, it's, it's a range of penalties with some discretion in there.
So, so as such, would that have to be addressed by law enforcement, or can a state enforcement officer address it?
Typically, it's a law enforcement thing, but we can, we can sure look at it, if there's a way for Dean to address it, we'll, we'll make it happen, I assume you don't have law enforcement, right?
Well, yeah, we do, the sheriff's department provides our.
You contract with them, okay, okay, so you do if you need it, all right.
Well, and again, it's on, on, on my end, before, you know, I'm trying to go between a lot of other things already, anyway, what's, what's one more thing to, to talk to? It seems like I have 90% of the people in the community's phone numbers, anyway, and I knock on just about every door, it seems like at one time or another also, so. Before the city incurs, you know, whatever it may be, if the city has to incur some kind of cost or something, that, if it's something that could be alleviated.
Well, that, I, you know, I mean, I have no problem with the city just as a courtesy, just say, hey, by the way.
Right.
But by the same token, you know, I, I would dare say, I suppose a lot of folks are just basically ignorant of the fact that that is a violation.
Not sure.
Okay.
And since we're talking about traffic, has anyone else noticed how many J turns are committed in this town? Are you confessing to admitting, or what?
I'm just holding my hand up.
Dollar a piece, we could fill our coffers.
This is true.
Anyway, I guess that's just a comment, as much as anything, but, I don't know, is it, is it, does Lucas have signs that says no J turn on Main?
We don't have a sign that says no J turns, but we're not, it's a state highway. It says no U turns.
Yeah, Lucas has no U turns.
We also have a.
Well, so if they have a do not turn across the double yellow.
Right, at this, at this.
Yes, I know that, there, I'm, somewhere I have seen a town that the sign says no J turns.
Russell has a lot of J turn signs.
Where?
Russell does, on their main street.
But it's, okay, so to be clear, on Main Street, it's actually a state highway. So you would not be under that state highway.
Under KDOTs.
Yeah, crossing the double yellow line.
Yeah.
You're not, yeah, you're, it's illegal there.
That's why we had a stretch over here with no.
With no penalty.
No yellow line on it, so everybody can turn around on that.
That's right.
Well, I'm going to leave here and turn around right there, I guarantee you, if you guys tell me I can't, then I won't.
But we've addressed that with law enforcement in the past, and, you know, they're like, do you want us to write citations to every single person that does a J turn? Because, I mean, since we don't have a city court for city traffic, that we go to county.
You put something on the sign to remind people, I mean, we have a flashing sign that's, we could probably, you know, remind people that that's not something.
There again, it's, you know, it's much a courtesy, hey, did you realize you can't do that? Yes, sir.
I think there's maybe, my thoughts on this, an exception to that J turn, that is out here on Main Street, double yellow line, state highway, you're not supposed to be able to do that unless there's a driveway where you're turning into. So that's sort of the exception.
So you're.
You can turn into your driveway.
You're thinking basically to access the residence or a business.
I'm talking, as an example, coming down the street.
Right.
And turning across the street into the city building, because there's a driveway there.
Into the shed, yeah.
Yeah, into the shed.
Yeah.
That's, that's where, that's what I'm talking about.
So you can pull into your alley from, your driveway from either, going in a direction, basically.
Yeah.
I actually had law enforcement tell me, though, like, my driveway, I should not back out into the east cross and go north, I should actually back out and go around the block.
And they're correct. But pulling in, if you could be going up and turn to.
But you'd agree, the one, you know, where I see it the most is the bank.
Post office, post office and bank, and the convenience store.
I agree with you, and I'll give you, there is a way to stop that. It's called, pick up the telephone, call the sheriff, have him come out here and sit a while. While we're doing that, remind him to bring their radar equipment, so that they can clock the county trucks coming down.
We've had that.
That's another.
It's 20 miles an hour, not 30, or not 40.
You've had that conversation with the county sheriff.
Yes, we did.
Yep.
I was told, I was told.
And he said, 30 minutes, yeah.
It just seems they're going faster, because that's a big truck.
That, yeah, that was never observed by an officer.
I can tell you what he's doing, a little more than 20, so.
Hey, I'll see what I can do with this, and I'll visit with Mr. Martin here.
Sure.
This week, or at his convenience, about that, and also on some of the other little, little issues, well, not little, but as far as the proving vehicles to be inoperable, that conversation, yeah, we, it doesn't, we, it doesn't even be talked about, my council may bore you guys to death, anyway.
Okay. Are you still open to helping us electrically?
Oh, yeah, okay, yeah, I'll still, yeah, that's fine.
They're all aware of that, anyway.
Yep.
All right. Anything else? Questions for Dean, instructions, comments?
Kick on the way out.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
Get home before the storm.
It's probably going to bypass.
All right, good, appreciate it.
Right away.
I'm glad you noticed that, right away.
It's right away, we're going to start right away.
Thank you.
Steve, Steve. He has a question.
He is.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
What's the city's policy on sidewalks, as far as ones that are really torn up and tearing them out?
The policy is that the homeowner is responsible for maintaining.
We can tear them out, and that won't be a problem.
Do what?
We can tear them out, and that won't be a problem.
Put it back.
Well, it'd be later on, they're just, I mean, they're almost, it's hard to mow right now, where they're all torn up so bad.
I'm just, you asked what the policy is, and I'm telling you, that later on, I've seen that later on, it's 10 years, and they're still not back.
If, well, I was going to say, unless you wanted to, again, we need to probably look at that sidewalk ordinance, just to be fair at some point, but, yeah, but yes, technically.
That is technically the policy.
Yeah.
But if you tear it out, you have to put it back.
And, I mean, we've had residents, you know, like you, Steve, sidewalks all tore up, they take it out, they plant it back to grass. And, you know, when you plant it back to grass, it tells us you're not intending to, to replace it.
What would be your timeframe to replace it?
I don't know, it'd be, it'd be after the house gets torn down, probably.
You have a chance.
There's, there's spots where they're a foot out of the ground.
I, I understand. I'm just, I'm just telling you, that's what the policy is. So. I'd be remiss to tell you anything else.
Yeah.
So. I don't have anything else to say about it. It's, it is what it is. All right. Right away trimming. We talked about this a little bit. We wanna get started trimming the trees back, at least to the curb. Uh, talked to Terry a little bit. We wanna, wanna make sure at least that the city grader can get under. Did you post anything?
Personal remove.
I'm, I didn't, hopefully, I, hopefully, I, I wrote it in the veteran notice. Um, no, yes, I did publish, uh, that we, that we would begin trimming trees and the right of way.
And unless we hear different, we, you know, I have had a couple individuals say they'd like to trim their own trees. I don't have a problem with that. You know, the criteria being, at least to the curb line and at least low or high enough that we can get the grader under it and maintain the streets, so.
Can we give them a timeframe?
I don't know. Yeah, Red.
I know. May I suggest rather than allowing your grader to go underneath it, you specify, which I think is a state, uh, legal limit, it's thirteen and a half foot.
Yeah, designated, designated height.
Designated in feet.
I did in the, in the notice.
Did you?
Yes. I didn't go, I didn't, I said fourteen foot.
I was gonna say fourteen, 'cause your standard truck's thirteen six.
That was based on the state.
Good.
We got streets. I'd be thrilled if we could just get the grader under. Haven't been under them for years.
Well, if you trim mine up there, then I can get my motorhome underneath.
You know, it's interesting, there's a lot of cities where there's a lot of truck traffic. The trucks will basically trim the trees.
Trim them for ya.
You know, some cities, they love that, that covered street. It's like, well, the trucks are gonna trim them anyway.
Screws up TV antennas, so.
Yep. On mobile homes.
Anthrax.
Anthrax.
Okay. All right. Uh, community service project.
So last, was it last Wednesday?
Wednesday.
It seems like it's been two weeks. Um, last Wednesday, the, several of the city employees and the high school worked together on cleaning out gutters. And we also painted the posts and the, the iron, angle iron on the interior of the baseball field fence.
Looks pretty good.
It does. Amazing what that did, doesn't it?
It's amazing, yeah. It, uh, I know the day before that project got, uh, well, actually the day, day before that, got the, uh, worked in the power wash, 'cause like, I'm a believer in, cleaning surfaces before you paint. So, but then Wednesday came and then, uh, the larger group, uh, they painted all, all of those posts and, you know, down there, then the tube softball bleachers, and then they also painted, uh, uh, the fare board, what provided, uh, paint for them to do those bleachers, around the arena, and then had six guys, um, uh, at least we got started, a start on scooping the gutters in the streets. Where, go up First Street of Ohio and then down, and I forgot how many trucks Mike or Seth, he called off.
I thought I heard eight or nine.
Yeah, at least. At least. But where, you know, like anything, it takes a while to build up, but once you get it there and start maintaining, it won't be so hard. And then that'll help with, uh, fixing the streets, you know, like in the future.
Did, did they actually paint a little bit on the baseball grandstand?
Yes.
On the north?
Yes, I did.
Just the rails.
Is that a tease or what is that?
That's the, we, Terry and I discussed, there is a lot of paint left over and we think that maybe, possibly, our summer employee, when he has some spare time, could work on continuing that project.
Yeah, if there's some time. If not, there's, uh, at least four gallons, if not a little more, in that five gallon pail of the silver, and it's not gonna go bad. It's oil days.
So were those the only projects they worked on?
And the bleachers. They, they painted the softball bleachers and they also painted some of the bleachers at the, at the.
They did at least one. I don't know if they did more than one. They might have started on two.
On the arena?
On the arena. They did all of them?
The last one, did we get a full coat? Cause they ran out of paint.
Uh, so they must have started on the other side and came back that way.
They did what?
All the ones around the arena. Bleachers, yeah. They did a lot of work, pretty good job.
Some tired kids.
Amazing what you could do if you could have them for a week. All right.
Yeah.
Well, while you're here, what do you have for us?
Oh, let's see. Small wastewater system testing, which we passed. It, uh, uh, passed the wastewater and then Tracy, the backup, he passed both his tests, so, we're in good standing with, uh, KSHB there as far as, uh, you know what I mean, uh, the testy stuff on that. Or certification. Okay. Um, and then, uh, between the rains, Kenny Small's been mowing and been weed eating. It really doesn't look it unless you're planning to do dandelion wine. There's lots of dandelions out there for anybody to.
Yeah, pick them before they get fuzzy though.
Yeah, true to that. It, uh, and then, uh, we're, talked a little bit about trimming and stuff. Uh, yeah, I know it's had some time this, like, month of May. And got a plan there, uh, to where just go around, like, put the cage on the front end loader and, uh, uh, the ones that are gonna take care of themselves, that's cool. We can, like.
When you guys have that on the loader, do you have a safety harness?
Yes. Yeah. No, yeah, seriously, yeah. Yeah. And.
You guys got hard hats?
No hard hats.
You guys ought to get some hard hats.
Well, actually, I do wear one when I run the saw.
I know.
It's my, my hard hat. It's got the mats and the mesh.
I'm just saying for trimming trees, I'd like to see you guys have hard hats on.
Okay, for everyone then. That's, well, I take that for granted. I've got one, so that should be a, yeah, just one person. That's my own. But yes, hard hats can be, get provided. When, when the tree trimming comes time. Streets. I know I recently talked to the, you know, Michael, uh, the county foreman guy in the road shop. Where they rent their equipment now to do chipping and sealing. He says pretty much, he's told cities, no, like, what they used to do in the past.
Right, right.
Hey, I'm gonna be in the area, but, uh, they say rent the stuff to do their thing and just long enough to get whatever, minimum time they can, like, use their stuff and get it back as quick as possible type thing. But he did tell me a couple things that I could do. That would be to keep, so the streets wouldn't be, get totally lost, you know, uh, cold patch. Where, uh, that'd be the most inexpensive way where, uh, yeah, uh, get virgin cold mix where it's oily enough, where obviously you spray the grass ahead of time, you know, as it's dying, sweep it, sweep the material or the debris off, which, uh, Tracy's did that a few times, or that one week getting the post broom going. And we got new brushes ordered for it. They came in, it's just a matter of changing them. They were worn down to, uh, the brushes that was on it. Uh, lay the cold patch and then roll over it with the roller.
Did you ask him about using that roller?
Yeah, we had permission to.
Okay.
Uh, cause I.
Do you need to notify him every time?
No, uh, cause, uh, well, I said, like, uh, I know the road grader, they parked their, their plow blade in front of it. I just figured that, just keep any Tom, Dick and Harry hooking up to it, which would be pretty hard to do. But he said, sure. Uh, I know the commissioners told him that the cities have permission to use whatever rollers or whatever. He didn't say to pick up the phone each time, but I figured when that time comes on a project, I will. Just in case they need it and then whoopsie, you know, uh, where's the roller, that type of thing. Let's see. Uh, I pretty much, oh, then he did tell me of one company, uh, called Circle C, uh, that contracted chips and seals. And he says they're, uh, inexp, oh, I don't know how much. Just they're like some of the small towns that don't have a lot of dough. But, uh, I don't have figures on that kind of stuff, but that would be an alternative also.
But like we talked, uh, one thing we wanna stay focused on is those two streets that we, we worked. The last, we really need to kind of know where we're at on them, so we don't get called up on the carpet over that.
I guess, oh, don't lose the two streets that are the best, so you know what we were talking about.
The ones that we got a grand, couple of years ago.
Really took a beating this year. So, we'll, we'll address that.
Okay. And that was what I was gonna ask. Do you have certain streets in mind that you'd be starting with or addressing first? Well, uh, the streets that, where they got rutted up on the sides, get rid of that debris or, or roll it flat and then patch it in with cold patch. If all else fails, you know, if nothing else is gonna be done, it's that way you don't lose them.
Right.
Where you might as well go back to rock streets. Oh, and that was, the other one was where, um, he don't run the, whenever they're in the area, Lads Query. I just said, please, you know, whatever you can, 'cause, uh, they don't run dump trucks that often. But they run, like, whenever they're in the area, it seemed like they were, you know, could have had chances to, and they weren't sure. Uh, but I said, please open it up to, like, if you're ever back in the area and you got your belly dump tractor trailers, pick up the phone. We'll, we'll take a load, you know, where they don't run their regular sawdust truck. Cause I said, I know you will not be able to get, turn ninety degrees down there with those. I said, we own the, the railroad track bed from here to the water plant. That'd be easy for those trucks to, where we got rid of all our snow debris.
I was gonna say, where we had the snow, that'd be an open area.
Yes, long open area. And then even if we had to, if we couldn't there, like, if it was too wet at the water plant, that rail bed there. And it'd be easy for the belly, uh, bell dump trucks to maneuver and it's still a good firm base, you know. Just for example. So he says, okay, we won't be there in a while, but, uh, well, I know in the past they.
For rock. Whenever they get a chance, so.
Yeah. I think that was about it, unless you.
Okay.
I don't have any concerns.
They have a question. Any questions for Terry?
I guess I have a question and I don't know if it goes to Terry or if it's more just a general question. Where the gas lines are up on, I gotta think what street it is. Across from John Ched.
Yes.
Is that Kansas Gas's lines that come out of the, around there?
Come down there on your dad's lot, yeah, yeah.
In the past, they've always, it's always been sprayed. Well, they came in and put metal framing around it and now nobody's been spraying it. Is that, property owner's responsibility or is that Kansas Gas?
I, I would dare say they tell you to stay away from it.
Okay.
Uh, maybe they just haven't gotten to. You mean they haven't done it in the past few years since they put those protectors?
Since they put the protectors around, they have not sprayed it or not.
Really?
And it, I know previously it was always sprayed, so I didn't know if that was a.
City or gas.
City thing or if it's gas thing. I weed eat it today. That's the reason I asked, so it was overgrown.
I would be, I guess, I would probably call Kansas Gas Service and ask them. I mean, that's, I think that's enough, but I would go.
I can say there's that one guy. He's always around.
Clear.
Yes, sir.
Steve, I'd like to give a big, big old thanks to Terry. Uh, we had a, uh, couple of sewer problems up there on our street on Kentucky. And he came to the rescue and he checked the main line. There was no problem with it, but he was very proactive on that and I do appreciate that.
Good.
You're welcome.
That was just to make sure that there wasn't any troubles on the main line and it was like no problem. And it was like the very next day after, um.
Eller.
Ellers. Um, it's like, okay. So, yeah, 'cause I took several barrels of water up in that flush out manhole and made sure, yeah, there was good flow.
And Robin Ward indicated that they've got a little issue there. It's gurgling, has a run water on it.
But, uh, that would probably be them, 'cause I know, uh, Paul's dumps into that line.
Yep.
Then Ward, then Eller, then, and you're going down that line.
Good job.
Just as an aside, you've been able to get anything accomplished with that property there?
Absolutely nothing. I've, uh, I've worse my hands with that one.
Okay. I just thought I'd ask, since we were talking about, about that part of town.
If you come look at it, it's now got some big holes in it.
That plywood.
You mean the plywood on top of it?
There's no plywood there. That's OSB.
Is that where you're talking about where the holes are?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Good. Do you have anything else?
I know something we discussed, just, um, have we considered putting anything in front of the new doors on the library?
Oh, the.
Or do we wanna discuss something along those?
I hadn't heard anything about what.
I, I'd mentioned it, I guess, outside of a meeting, so.
Well, Terry and I had talked about it several times. So there's a driveway there. Now we have brand new, very expensive doors.
Yeah.
Yeah.
If, if a person maybe doesn't get completely stopped, the chances of them going to the doors is quite.
Well, it was witnessed. One come really, really close one day.
Really?
Yeah.
So we just.
Yeah, I was like, whoa, 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 whoa.
What are you guys thinking that would be aesthetically pleasing?
Aesthetically pleasing or, or.
Poles or posts?
Yeah, I think.
Where they're not a trip hazard.
You need a physical barrier.
Yes.
I guess, I guess my thought was something like what Walmart has in front of their doors, you know, it's a piece of pipe.
So you guys aren't talking about the automatic ones like in Washington D.C.
Sure.
I think they're talking.
Funny left in the library for that.
Don't trip the sensors.
What? It's funny you guys say this because we're getting ready to put posts over here at the depot. We've been talking about that for years, but it's gonna happen like pretty soon. So, do you guys know what you want or?
What's the depot putting in?
We're gonna go, as of right now, it's gonna be four and a half inch pipe.
Concrete?
It probably won't quite be as high as what the ones at the fire station are.
Okay.
But they'll come up and they'll get filled full of cement and cap.
Yeah.
The only thing I'm thinking is probably one of the first things that probably would have to clear or make sure there's not a gray areas with K-dot, not knowing.
Have checked with that and it's not. And because they only make, they only deal with the middle of the highway, the rest is.
You asked that question.
It's okay. I don't mind answering it, but, but basically, so.
Well, I'm sure.
Yeah, no, but.
Just go drill in a hole.
Yep.
How much do you guys think?
They only, you only have to address them if you're going to tear up the street.
Well, I don't know if it'd have to be two posts and a bar that comes across. I mean.
Yeah, I was, my thought was posts and keep them wide enough so you could still consider that handicap accessible with ramp.
I don't think I'd put a bar across.
I don't know. I, I, I just.
I mean, you want them narrow enough so that a car can't go through, but yet wide enough for a wheelchair, was my thought, so.
Probably at least four.
I don't know how much room y'all got out there, but a lot of cities in front of their buildings will put, and it would be a pretty good structure, like a cement plant or, or.
Yeah, that was my, that was my other thought.
A three foot concrete culvert.
But they were maintaining the driveway, 'cause that's our handicap ramp. But they'll maintain the driveway, cause that's our handicap ramp.
Well.
A part of it.
Why's it gotta be? Well, I know there is one, like the official designated handicap accessible ramp where it's got the, the grippies.
Right, any of these intersections.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh.
Cause you don't, doesn't drop, but that, what, I'm just curious what the, I mean, you're wanting to put a barricade up, but you don't want to leave a hole, so if you've got it on each side, these streets, on, on that street there is one down here, I, I don't know what the rules are. Now, I mean, I just read them, we're just talking here about that, well, maybe that would be something more aesthetically pleasing than two posts.
Than just a pipe.
Kansas legalizes marijuana, you can put marijuana plants down there.
I guess my thought was just rather.
Make sure they know on that.
Side record.
What is his last name?
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Anything wrong?
Be looking into.
We go around the table and ask questions or comments or.
Not now.
No. Just for last chance, better make it a good one.
Last official meeting, so I'd like to say I have learned a lot through all the discussion, all the meetings, um, I didn't know that the city kept up so many utilities, I guess, but there's a lot of stuff that you go through and so I don't know how many months I've been there, but there's tons of stuff I don't even think about that the city addresses and it's. Yeah, so I didn't know about a lot of that stuff, but now I do, so that's pretty cool, and then all the code enforcement stuff that Dean brings up every day, that the city has to deal with, there's just a lot more stuff than I realized, so it's been cool and fun and a learning experience to be here the last several months, I don't know how long it's been, it's been a long time, it seems like.
Nine months.
Well, we've, we've enjoyed having you, you've been very able to maintenance, trouble free.
You picked your president, are you? Yeah.
And I'm assuming once you have your civil engineering degree, you will come back and.
We've seen the trails, right?
You'll be the president by that time, I'll be married, you'll be the president.
No, I, I wanted him to come back and do the engineering for us.
I'll need to do that too.
Yeah, thank you guys.
Well, we, we have enjoyed it, you've, you've done a, a young man's job of being the first guy through the programs. Thank you. Rhonda, you got anything?
No.
No, I'm good.
Jackie, it's only quarter to nine.
Tick tock.
You got an hour and fifteen minutes, no?
I went tomorrow.
We gotta get Chance back in the void, it's like they don't remember that he got a forty-five minute drive.
I guess the only thing is I, I, I want to go over the financials, I wanted to add, what I failed to put on the warrant list is, um, scholarship. I just didn't go ahead and write that check and fulfill his portion of that.
Good.
Um, and for that to be awarded on Wednesday night at the school, when they do their award presentation for scholarships, et cetera.
I'd like to see somebody make a motion for that, just for acknowledgement.
Like, what do you want to?
Make a motion?
Make a motion.
I'll make a motion that.
For his award, like his five hundred dollar scholarship?
Or.
You award that.
I mean, we do other.
Do you wanna do that or to have it presented at awards night, do we need that in the motion or is that?
I guess, I, there are, I mean, the requirements, I guess, kind of confirming that he fulfilled the requirements of the city to receive that scholarship.
What I'm saying is, we pay bills all the time, but I'd like to see in the, in the minutes.
Designated in the minutes. J.C. Hill.
If that makes sense.
Sure.
Anybody?
Oh, I thought you were doing it. I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we acknowledge J.C. Hill as our student ambassador for USD two ninety-nine. That he receives, uh, the aforementioned scholarship to be presented at awards night. By a member of city council, there, that way we can, we can set that precedent.
Have a second, do you second Rhonda?
I'll second it.
A motion of second for everything he said, basically acknowledged J.C.'s proposed requirements, we approve the awarding his scholarship. Any further conversation? If not, all in favor, say aye. Person sign, motion carried. Congratulations.
Thank you.
You have to pick somebody.
You still wanna build your financials, don't you?
Sure.
Guys, I'm gonna say this, David, for whatever reason, didn't, even when I asked him to, but, as you'll recall, he did make the comment that the constructionally intended that, you know, when you're an elected official and you take that oath, that basically it is your responsibility to do your utmost to protect life and property. A lot of people aren't aware of that, I mean, it's just, so, uh.
I wasn't quite sure if you didn't try to understand what you were asking him to do.
Well, maybe that, that could very well be, I just, you know, I mean, he was pretty adamant, or at least the gentleman who made the presentation was very adamant.
He was very adamant.
You know, you're elected official, your house gets blowed away, uh, you might have to take care of other issues first, so, and, and it is, it's a responsibility, so.
It was enlightening, I learned a lot.
Alright.
So, income for the month, eighteen thousand nine hundred eighty-seven dollars and seventy cents. And total expenses are forty-three thousand five hundred forty-two, forty-three thousand five hundred forty-three dollars and eleven cents. Of course, that was including our insurance payment, which is sort of, are we, are, for the year, which is over fourteen thousand dollars, so that's a little high this month. There's really nothing spectacular other than other, or different, I should say, other than the insurance, everything is pretty, pretty consistent with what's normal months are on. Is there any questions on the warrant list? For the month, like I said, I do need to add the five hundred dollars for that scholarship, I failed to have that on the list. Any questions? So this, and again, I put a approximate percent for their salary, cause that won't be, and so it actually give dollars and I pay those, but I, I put down an approximate for that. So, the warrant list would be about twenty thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars and sixty some cents. Plus the five hundred.
Entertained a motion to accept the financials, is that?
I second. Second.
Motion of second to accept the financials. Further discussion, if not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
At the same time, motion carried. Anything else, last chance.
I have one more. As far as, a helper for Jim.
Yes, a replacement, or not replacement.
Helper.
Panic.
Yeah.
Self stability.
Yeah, so you could, um, be a backup or a fill-in.
Trainee, trainee.
So, I guess the question I have on that, do you want me to ask for applicants? How do you, I mean, the, again, my, my question to the council is, if you're gonna offer that position, there's got to be some consistency, I don't think that they can just come in twice a year. They're gonna have to be in here more than that, so I don't know if you want to offer a weekly or a monthly, hourly? I, I mean, to me, if they're not in here on a regular basis, I mean, I would say a minimum monthly, I don't see how they could come in and fill in for me in my absence.
Right, well, that stands for reason.
So.
So, like, uh, like a treasurer?
I talked, and I talked, I spoke with Kathy about that and, to me, the natural place to put that is right now, our treasurer just looks at the bills and signs the checks, and, you know, as a, a check and balance for that, but I feel like that treasurer position could be given to somebody and they could actually have some monthly hours and then be able to fill in for me, to me, be a logical way to go about that.
I would say, come up with a job description and applicants, things like that.
League of municipalities have any suggested material, suggested material, suggested material. Uh, just any.
It really, I mean, you could, some cities of our size are like us, that have a very, the treasurer is just like, you know, she gets paid twenty-five dollars a month right now and like I said, basically she looks over, verifies, and that's all. Um, so you can kind of go the gamut with that, and a city of this size, some of them have, I, I mean, it's really up to this, it's really up to us as how you want to do that, but like I said, to me, to be able to fill in for me, they've got to have, be in here monthly, I mean, at minimum.
Well, they're gonna have to be like a notary and.
Not a notary, but they will be bonded, yes, they will need to be bonded, especially if you're gonna fill that treasurer position, cause right now Kathy and I are both bonded.
Okay.
So like, like when you began your training with in preparation for taking over, how many hours did that, how many days, weeks, what, refresh our memory, what did you do?
Sounds like a couple of months.
Yes, I mean, I, I was here every day for two months.
That's what I asked.
Yeah.
Um, I think this, I think that I could have somebody in here, like I said, I, if you wanted to do one day a week for a couple of months, I think that would, I think that I could cover what I would need to and then from that point I'll make it. You know, like I said, they're gonna have to be in here at least.
Bleachers and.
They could, yeah, yeah, that's right. I mean.
Well, I mean, you have.
There are things, I'll put it this way, there are tons of things that I don't have time to, like, like going through ordinances, some of that needs to be done. If you had somebody in here, I think we could start working on some of those things, going through paperwork, I've worked on a record retention policy and once we adopt that we need to get rid of things according to that, right, retention policy.
Okay.
You know, just, I mean, there's just things like that, there are added things that I could also have, we could be doing and addressing, I think.
Well, what I'm saying is, you know best what you think is possible, what, I mean.
I think my big thing is offering.
Obviously, we don't need somebody coming in and ordering in two months like you did.
Right, right, no, I think it could be happen over a period of time. I guess in my mind, I think it would be nice to offer them, even if it's half a day a week, something that's regular. I, 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 I mean, I, that, I mean, I, I guess to me, to get somebody who's willing, who's gonna be willing to do that, I, I feel like there should be a certain amount of hours, what you said, that could be ten hours a month or whatever, you wanna choose.
Half a day a week is gonna be twenty hours.
Right.
Why don't you put something down in paper, you know, and write it in a little.
So I can do that, in, in the meantime, do you want me to?
Advertise?
And then when we finish the other process first.
Yeah, definitely, yeah.
As long as you feel like you can have something presented that you can do that, so it's like, this is what it entails.
Yes, that's no problem.
Okay.
Would you, so do you want, so I'm saying, would you rather have me write that up and then approve that before you advertise?
Yeah, I would.
Okay.
And then, and then when you have a time opening for applications, so we can be ready to screen applicants.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, anything else? Okay, anything else? Entertained a motion for a draw.
I'm over your jury.
I'll second that, Jackie.
All opposed, say aye. In favor, say aye.
Nobody felt that. Nobody.
We, we haven't fallen asleep yet.